Okay, good morning, everybody. My name is Laura Cardocas, Executive Director for the Oregon Board of Tax Practitioners, and I will be serving as the Oregon Board's Rule Making Hearing Officer today. The purpose of today's rulemaking hearing is to take public comment on the new and amended proposed rules that were published in the Oregon Secretary of State Bulletin on March 1, 2025. Please note that during today's rulemaking hearing, board staff will not be answering any questions related to substance of the proposed rules. Today's hearing is being held in a hybrid form, meaning in person and online. Each person will only have five minutes today to present their oral testimony, and Ms. Boyer will be calling time when your time is up, and we will ask you to conclude your statement at that time. Each person who wishes to comment during today's rulemaking hearing must, if they are with us in person, and currently we do not have any, fill out one of the registration cards on the information table at the back of the room, and then we'll bring it up to Ms. Boyer. We will use those cards to call each person when it's their name to testify. Being that there's none, I'm going to skip this section for now. Each person, when you're online, please make sure that you address your name, address, and if you're here to represent an organization or just yourself, you may then commence your comment. If you're filing a written testimony, also, please just summarize it during your comment period, and then you can either hand it in here, again, there's no one here, or you can email it to me, regular mail it, or fax it to the Board. Attention to Laura Cardocas, Executive Director. Please make sure your name is also on that written testimony. When the rulemaking hearing closes today, there will be still time to file any additional written comments that you may have on the published proposed rules. The written comment period will close on Monday, May 5, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Anything received after that date, even if postmarked before that date, will not be included in the comment packet presented to the Board. Comments may be mailed first class to the attention of myself, Executive Director, at 200 Hawthorne Avenue, Southeast Suite D-450, Salem, Oregon 97301. Did you add the two new people?
Mm-hmm.
Or email to me at tax, T-A-X dot B as in boy, D as in dog, at tax, T-A-X dot Oregon dot gov. They can be faxed to me at 503-585-5797, or they can be hand-delivered to the Board. Attention, the Executive Director during regular business hours, which are from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., we are in the office Tuesdays and Wednesdays at the same location, 200 Hawthorne Avenue, Southeast, Suite D-450, Salem, Oregon 97301. Comments received after May 5, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. will not be considered following closure of the written comment period, and OBTB members will be permitted to review all oral and written comments and the hearing officer's summary report on all oral and written comments, including answers to questions posed therein. Thereafter, the Board will meet to discuss the amended and proposed rules at its next regularly scheduled Board meeting. When the Board's discussions at the Board meeting are complete, the Board will vote as to whether to adopt, amend, or repeal the proposed individual rule changes contained in the Secretary of State's March 1, 2025 Bulletin publication. For those present, we have restrooms located through the glass doors on the right, and I will begin this hearing at 9:00, 10:00, just to give us a little cushion here in case somebody did show up in person, and to have them fill out these registration cards. So I'm going to take a quick, about three-minute break, and we're going to get everything set up, and make sure we have all the names in order, and then we will start the hearing. Thank you. If you don't have your mics muted, even if you're calling in, can you please mute your mics until I call upon you? And for those that are calling in, I'm going to announce you toward the end, but I don't have your name, so I'm not going to know how to call in for you. Right, yeah, I just want to be blurred out like that. Carrie, can you mute your mic as well for now?
Thank you.
I can still hear some background noise, so if anyone, even if they're calling in on the phone, can mute their phones or their mics, it'd be greatly appreciated until I call on you to speak. We're going to get started now, so good morning again, everybody. This recording, we started recording before, but the recording is still active. This rulemaking hearing is now in session and being recorded to maintain a permanent record. My name is Laura Cardocas, Executive Director for the Oregon Board of Tax Practitioners, and I'll be serving as the OPTP's Rule Hearing Advisor or Officer during today's rulemaking hearing. The purpose of today's rulemaking hearing is to take public comment on the new and amended proposed rules that were published in the Oregon Secretary of State Bulletin on March 1, 2025. Please make note that Board staff will not during today's rulemaking hearing answer any of the questions related to the substance of the proposed rules. Today's hearing is being held hybrid form, and we're going to give each person five minutes to present their oral testimony. Ms. Boyer will call time when your time is up. At that time, we'll ask you to finish up your statement. Each person who wishes to comment must, if they're with us in person, I'm sorry, we don't have anybody in person. I still can hear some feedback. If anyone's on, can you please mute your mics? That's not muted already. So when you're speaking online, the first thing I'll have you do is state your name, where you live, your location, and if you're representing yourself, or if you're representing an association or a group. Then if you are also going to file a written testimony, please summarize your testimony during your comment period here. You're also welcome to submit, if you've not already, your written testimony by emailing it, regular mailing it, or faxing it in. When the rulemaking hearing closes today, there will still be time to file additional written comments on the published proposed rules. The written comment period will close on Monday, May 5, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Anything received after that date, even if postmarked before, will not be included in the comment packet presented to the Board. Comments may be mailed first class to the attention of the Executive Director at 200 Hawthorne Avenue, Southeast, Suite D-450, Salem, Oregon 97301. Email to me directly at tax, T-A-X dot B as in boy, D as in dog, at tax.org.gov. They can be faxed to us at 503-585-5797, or hand-delivered to the Board Office during regular business hours, which are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We are in office Tuesdays and Wednesdays, or by appointment at the same location, 200 Hawthorne Avenue, Southeast, Suite D-450, Salem, Oregon 97301. Comments received after May 5, 2025, at 5:00 will not be considered following closure of the written comment period. OBTP members will be permitted to review all oral and written comments and the hearing officer's summary report on all oral and written comments, including answers to questions posed therein. Thereafter, the Board will meet to discuss and amend the proposed rules at its next regularly scheduled Board meeting. When the Board's discussion at that Board meeting are complete, the Board will vote as to whether to adopt, amend, or repeal the proposed individual rule changes contained in the Secretary of State's March 1, 2025 Bulletin publication. Thank you for coming today and joining us and providing us with your comments. I will now be calling the list in order that I saw them appear online, and we will take your comments for five minutes. You'll hear the alarm go off when your five minutes are up. So the first person we have speaking will be Chad Mangum.
Yes, sorry about that. All right, my name is Chad Mangum. I am a solo practitioner, out of state, live in the state of Utah, Masters in Taxation, enrolled agent, licensed tax consultant. I also have an online platform called the In This State, disseminating information. I'm not here to disparage the Board or anything, I'm just here to ask critical questions, and just some disparities I've noticed. So the Board's claimed in its proposed rule filings that it didn't need to consult small businesses or convene an advisory committee because its own members already bring necessary experience. That's not just dismissive, it directly contradicts what the Board admitted in its 25 to 27 Governor's Budget submission. On page 23, question four, under the DEI section, the Board states, "The Board's current demographic is not representative of the state of Oregon. People of color are not well represented, meaning their voices often don't give equal weight. The Board is more reflective of the licensed tax consultant demographic, who are majority white, older females." So which is it? If the Board admits it's not representative, it can't credibly claim it speaks for all affected shareholders. You can't dismiss the need for public input while acknowledging elsewhere that you don't reflect the public. In question five of the same document, the Board claims it ensures multiple perspectives by working with OSTC, OATC, VIDA, various Oregon programs in policy development. There's no record of those groups being consulted during this rulemaking. No advisory committee, no minutes, no outreach. It was, you know, that was a form answer, not a process. The Board further states in its proposed rules, "The proposed new and amended rules were made necessary, among other things, by changes in technology that may be used by tax preparation businesses." That's a clear admission that the legislature didn't contemplate these circumstances, out-of-state tax preparation, and instead of seeking legislative clarification, the Board is attempting to regulate through rulemaking. That's fundamental overreach, and the Board's authority comes from Oregon statute, which limits its jurisdiction to activities occurring within the state. There is no legislative grant of authority to regulate out-of-state tax preparers, and yet the Board is attempting to create the appearance of such authority through administrative rule. They attempted similar overreach previously in 2017 and were called out for it. They lost in appellate court. This is more of the same, a regulatory power grab beyond what the law permits. They'll lose again. Just as troubling are the broad unsubstantiation consumer protection claims, such as businesses whose employees have no training or experience pose significant consumer protection to unwitting Oregon tax preparers. And then they go on to say that these out-of-state tax preparers perform incompetent tax preparation, such loving words directed at all of those out-of-state preparers. But where's the data? If this is such a pressing issue, where are the complaints, enforcement actions, or reports to the legislature? And again, no outreach to the small businesses they now claim pose a risk. Under Cost of Compliance in the proposed rules, specifically page two, the Board fails to meaningfully disseminate and address affected small businesses. They don't quantify impact, they simply say, you know, "It's standard licensing and fees", and avoid further analysis. That's not compliance, that's avoidance with what they're supposed to be reporting. The Board also claimed it didn't need to involve small businesses because its six members come from geographically diverse areas of the state, but having six people from different, six different zip codes doesn't mean you've captured perspectives of the broader profession, especially when rules affect out-of-state preparers. In closing, this rulemaking is riddled with contradictions, unsupported assertions, and procedural shortcuts. If the Board adopts these rules in their current form, it risks not just public trust, but legal invalidation. Thank you for your time.
Good. That was awesome, Chad.
Thank you. Next, we have Joyce Chang.
Good morning. I was just listening in, but I thank you for allowing me the chance to speak. I am Joyce Chang EA, CSCA's Governance and Advocacy and Governance Manager. I want to ditto what Chad just said. I noted some similar discrepancies. Our concern is that the strategic plan submitted by the Board indicated making it easier for out-of-state practitioners to practice, and I find that that's the opposite of what's happening. The requirement to have out-of-state, unlicensed Oregon, not Oregon-licensed preparers hire an Oregon-licensed preparer to supervise is really an overreach and added complexity that doesn't really seem to add any real benefit. Who would control the oversight? How would people find people who are willing to take on out-of-state practitioners, not as employees, but, you know, to supervise? So in the spirit of helping out-of-state practitioners practice, and I speak solely for enrolled agents, why not allow a minimum number of tax preparations without a license for those who have people who moved from California to Oregon? Who knows better than the previous, you know, the existing preparer who may be in California to prepare their Oregon tax returns? So New York, other states allow a minimum number of returns to be prepared without a license. Oops, I'm sorry.
Somebody left, you're good, sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you. So something along those lines would be more reasonable. And the other comment I will make is that...
Your son is calling you, please pick...
The fact that enrolled agents are not given the same exemption is disheartening because enrolled agents specifically deal with tax, and attorneys are given a free exemption, and CPAs are given a free exemption, and there is no measurement of what their knowledge is in taxation. And they are not required to be knowledgeable in taxation to, you know, be an attorney or be a CPA. And it seems that enrolled agents who do specialize in taxes and are governed by the Code of Ethics of the Internal Revenue Service, it seems that they are probably best placed to have the exemption to not be licensed by Oregon. There's no guarantee that the attorneys and CPAs are cognizant of Oregon tax law, and that is something we would like the Board to consider going forward, and I will yield my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Eve Davis. Eve, can you hear me? I'm just going to give Eve a minute here in case she's having any computer issues. If not, what I'll do is I'll go to the next person, and I'll come back for you, Eve, if you're struggling with any technical difficulties or anything. Did she jump off, or did she? Okay, I don't, I'm not seeing that we actually have Eve on any longer, so I'm going to go ahead and move to Susan Hirsch.
All right, I don't have any comments at this time, I'm here just to listen and learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next, if they want to speak, will be Zachary Hellman.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hi, my name is Zachary Hellman, I'm an enrolled agent in Los Angeles, California. I'm also an LTC. I want to just thank the Board for the opportunity to make some public comments today, and I also appreciate the quick response I've received from the Board related to questions regarding the rules. And I think as an out-of-state practitioner, again echoing, you know, what Chad and Joyce brought up, you know, one of the reasons I became an LTC is because I have great respect for compliance and making sure that my clients remain compliant, but I do think, you know, there's an administrative burden here for taxpayers who have Oregon tax filing requirements, who may have no other attachment to Oregon. And, you know, I think the majority of the people here on this call today, you know, have a great interest in serving the best interests of their clients while also, you know, respecting, you know, the Board and the law. And I think, I appreciate that, you know, this may require some legislative action, and that the statute is written in a way, and the Board takes the position that they're simply just, you know, creating rules in response to that. But I think, I hope this begins a larger conversation about the issues that are at play, one, for out-of-state practitioners, but also for Oregon taxpayers in general. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Zachary. Next, we have John Burke.
I have no comments at this time. Thank you for the opportunity to be at the meeting.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Oleg. I didn't see anything else on your picture other than that, I don't know if that's your last or your first, I apologize. Do you see if they're still... I'm not seeing them, that they're still present, so we're going to move to Jeanette Burnett. Jeanette, do you wish to...
There we go.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry, I unmute myself, thank you, thank you so much. Well, thank you for taking the time to listen to us. I do have a brief statement. I've been a tax professional for over 30 years, and an enrolled agent for over 10. I practice in the state of Nevada. Some of my concerns, well, Chad did a great job of really laying out in a lot more detail than I have, but some of the things that concern me is that residents of Oregon, former residents of Oregon, and others with simply an Oregon filing requirement are unable to choose the preparer of their choice because the Board is, in my opinion, created a unilateral, unilaterally created, just an unreasonable administrative burden. I don't see that this is necessary, because you're always going to have people who do or don't choose to learn what the requirements are for filing, what the needs of their clients are, and even people, plenty of people that are licensed in Oregon do not stay regardless of whether they get the required CE or not, they don't always even pay attention necessarily. So just because they have that credential doesn't mean that they're doing a good job. And there's just no discernible reason to hold EAs, enrolled agents, to a higher standard than CPAs and attorneys. There's no reason to think that they know more about what's going on in Oregon and taxes in Oregon than an enrolled agent. So anyway, that's brief. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me and to listen to others, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Next, we have, if they want to speak, Charity. I also don't see a last name on yours, Charity, I apologize.
My name's Charity D.
My name's Charity Dean. I'm a licensed tax preparer. I think my situation is a little different than some people in that I actually work in, I live out of state but work for an Oregon company. I'm not representing them, but was that representing myself? And that what's been portrayed to me by the people that I work for is that because I live in another state and work remotely from home but for a company is that I have to be a licensed tax consultant to be able to work from home. And it's not much different than what I hear everyone else saying is that that puts on extra burden of other people and having to take those responsibilities and the extra costs in the knowledge that that everyone else is repeating. I don't know quite how else to say that. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought with that, but it's, the things that, what they're saying, you know, not everybody, just because someone's getting their life, having to do those things in other states, they don't take on, they don't know all those things that, they don't stay with it. It is, it's just extra burdens on everyone. They don't. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought for that, but I agree with a lot of what everybody else is saying and they've said it much better than I have. I don't think the information is being portrayed very well of what's fully expected of other people. It's a lot of extra things that anyone that's not living in the state of Oregon and can be under, have under a licensed tax consultant can adhere to outside of being in the state of Oregon. Thanks.
Thank you, Charity. Next, we have Michelle McCahey. Michelle will be speaking, I believe, on behalf of NAEA.
Yes, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the National Association of Enrolled Agents and the more than 66,000 enrolled agents nationwide who serve taxpayers across the country, including here in Oregon. While we appreciate the board's stated mission to protect consumers and expand opportunities for remote work, these proposed rule changes, particularly those targeting out of state professionals and mandating Oregon-based supervision, would undermine those goals. The proposed rules include several provisions that we oppose, such as overreaching and onerous for out of state members who have clients in Oregon, regardless of whether they are new or clarifications of existing rules. A few examples are the provision requiring out of state firms to register with the board, the provision requiring a licensee to seek assistance from a person who is competent in an area of concern, a provision on that all advertising must be approved in advance by a registered tax preparation business's designated consultant, and the provision that OBTP would accept IRS-approved coursework for continuing education, yet it still refuses to recognize enrolled agents credentialed and regulated by the IRS. Let me be clear. Enrolled agents are not unlicensed or unqualified. They are federally credentialed by the US Department of the Treasury, subject to rigorous testing, continuing education, and strict ethical oversight. They have unlimited practice rights before the IRS and regularly prepare state returns across multiple jurisdictions. Yet, Oregon continues to require EAs to pay additional fees and pass a redundant exam just to do what were already licensed and qualified to do, while exempting CPAs from the same burden. That's not consumer protection. It's a double standard. More troubling is a proposal that would force out of state firms to employ Oregon-licensed supervisors for any return filed here. In a digital tax environment, this requirement is both impractical and unnecessary. It adds cost and complexity without any clear public benefit. And let's not ignore the contradiction at the heart of these rules. The board accepts IRS-approved continuing education, but refuses to recognize IRS-credentialed professionals. If you trust the IRS to train us, why not trust the professionals they credential? These rules won't protect Oregon taxpayers. They'll limit access to qualified help, increase costs, and drive small firms out of the market, all while offering no additional safeguards. We recognize that exempting enrolled agents from Oregon's licensure laws will require legislative action, and we're going to move toward that end. But we also urge the board to be part of the solution. Just as you supported legislation to create a new registered tax aid category, you can also advocate for fairness by supporting a legislative fix that recognizes enrolled agents. If your goal is truly consumer protection, let's focus on competency, not geography. Oregon taxpayers deserve access to the best qualified professionals, regardless of their zip code. Thank you so much for your time and your service to the public.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have Carrie Hayes.
Thank you very much for giving us all the time and space to be able to listen in and to participate wherever possible. I have very little to add to the comments some other folks have already made. I'm an enrolled agent here in California. And what my concern is primarily is taking care of clients, both ones I've already got as well as potential new clients. I do understand and appreciate that your intention and purpose is to protect Oregonian taxpayers and procedures to make sure that everyone is getting the best possible service when it comes to handling their taxes on a yearly or monthly basis, whatever the standard may be for that particular person. But an additional concern that I have with this is the level of oversight that is being proposed would be onerous and actually serving the Oregonian taxpayers potentially. I have had clients who used to live in Oregon and decided to, after they retired, move across the country to go live next to their children so they could watch their grandchildren grow up, but decided to keep their home for a rental, their primary home for a rental, because it was an old family home. And I've been unable to help them because they have a single rental now in Oregon, therefore requiring an Oregon tax return to be filed. And I don't know exactly how you folks would propose a mechanism by which we would adequately serve those customers who have that kind of edge case. So I would question the comparison of enrolled agent credentials and education to attorneys or CPAs as not actually being an apples-to-apples situation. Attorneys and CPAs are both highly specialized and highly qualified in various areas that both overlap for enrolled agents, but enrolled agents specifically deal with tax. So I would ask for your support in perhaps revising some of the recommendations and working with the state laws to propagate the ability of enrolled agents to also serve Oregonian taxpayers. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Next on the list, we have Brianna Sage.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am just here to listen today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bree. Next, we have, and I'm not sure which way your name is, if it's Luo Maya or if it's Maya Luo. I apologize.
Yes, this is her.
Do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments. I just feel Oregon licensed tax consultants really do diligence on the filing tax return and following the rules. And I've been in practice from 2018 to now. I'm also licensed EA. So the same thing environment in Oregon is very much transparent for following the rules or the tax professionals, also the regulations. I also appreciate this environment always has continued education. And I'm not much know what the ruling is, so I just got an email yesterday. So if you can repeat what's the ruling, it is, would be appreciated. Thank you.
So there's no ruling currently, those, what I sent out. If you want to look at those, you can still make a public comment by writing it in. If you want to read those rules that were attached to that email to read through what the proposed new and amended rules in that are. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to me via phone after this or email. Next, we have Thomas Como, I believe.
Hi, good morning. I don't have any comments to provide. I'm like others, just here to kind of listen. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Zachary Hellman.
I think I came in twice, but I appreciate it.
Oh, yes, I see that. Thank you. Sorry about that. Next, we have UT Wang.
Thank you. Just here to listen. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have, I had two people via phone. I'm not sure if I still have two. Is, do either of you want to speak that are calling in? Okay, we'll move on to Kim Prosser Noonan.
Yes, I'm just here to listen to the comments. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kim. Let's see, next we have Donna Byrne.
There we go. Took me a minute to find the unmute. I also was not intending to say anything, but I will. I'm an enrolled agent, attorney, and Oregon licensed tax consultant. This is my encore career. I was a law professor for many years. And one of the things that happened to me was that since I taught tax, the administration decided I should teach state and local tax, which turned out to be a very different animal from income tax regulations and so on. And so first, I want to recognize the board for having to deal with a statute that is remarkably absent in anything that ties it to a particular jurisdiction. There's, there's no statements about regulating tax preparers located in this state or practicing in this state. So applying that statute to these completely different times, I know must be a crazy task. But I, I wanted to agree actually with one of Chad's comments, which is that probably applying our licensing requirement to everybody in the country is an overreach. And I intended to write a nice analysis of this and then suffered a death in the family right after tax season. So that hasn't happened. Maybe by Monday I'll have written comments. So that's my caution. But aside from that, I'm, I'm just concerned that if Oregon requires a license for anybody who wants to file a return in Oregon, and if everybody else does the same with whatever minimal fee attached, that will put a lot of people out of business. And I have clients who move out of state. I always say they'll, I'll do their return for their transition year and then they should find somebody local who, you know, will know about their K through 12 subtractions or whatever they've got. And then I have clients who move here and in that partial year, sometimes they find an Oregon person and sometimes it's done by their old person. And so if every state requires a license for everybody who has moved or left behind a rental, I think we're opening up a big, huge can of worms that may be ill-advised. So I wanted to say that. And then point of clarification for many people out there, this has nothing to do with enrolled agents. The non, the lack of a carve-out for enrolled agents is purely statutory and the board is accommodating the statute as well as possible. So thank you for this opportunity to be heard and to let us listen.
Thank you, Donna. Yeah, and Donna, you have through, like I said, Monday at 5:00 PM. Next, I see there's an Amanda. I don't have a last name, Amanda. Like she's sleeping. It looks like the next then we have is Elaine. We still have Elaine on. I don't see Elaine. She is still. Elaine? Oh, there you are.
Hi, I kind of jumped into this last minute and was trying to find out more about this, this program. I'm, I have, I'm an Oregonian, but I now live in Washington because of political reasons. But I, I just feel like to do the best for our clients, it's not their fault that they move to another state and vice versa, for them to, for clients to move here. But to think that you have the power to control what someone in New York does an Oregon return for their client, what, do you expect the client to come to Oregon to have somebody do their return for the Oregon portion? No one will do that. So I, I just feel like this is really overreaching. I was on the board for seven and a half years. We dealt with people that were in Idaho or California that were encroaching on things that were not legal in our rules, but never have we told them what they can do in their own state. That just seems such an overreach. I, I can't, I can't even express how much I feel that that that, that makes people not want to comply. And if you, you're trying to protect the, the Oregon return. You're not really protecting the, the customer. You're protecting the Oregon return. And by doing that, you're, you're affecting how someone in New York or in Florida, wherever they are, if they knew that their preparer could be subjected to penalties for doing a return, that just seems ludicrous, just seems ludicrous. I'm sorry. I see absolutely no merit in this program whatsoever. I think that Oregon has a, a need to want to control everything that happens in their state. And I agree with that. I think that the state should. But when you're trying to get people to comply and file a tax return under the guise of a penalty that could be coming because someone did it, that's not that's not an Oregon licensee, I think that's going over bounds. I'm an Oregon licensee and have been for 40 years. This isn't new to me. I just feel like it's overstepping. That's all I got to say. I'm sorry. I mean, I appreciate what you, what you think that you're trying to do, but I think you're just going to hurt a lot of people and a lot of tax returns that don't get filed because of it. That's all.
Thank you, Elaine. Next, we have Susan Gallagher Smith.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I can't imagine how difficult navigating the statute around jurisdiction has been and will continue to be. Change is never comfortable or easy. I would like to comment on, and I will submit all of this in writing because that'll be helpful. Eight hundred zero zero two zero 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 zero. We have electronic Oregon Dropbox. The use, we haven't defined what that is. What defines an Oregon Dropbox versus a non-Oregon Dropbox? That may be an area of confusion. Throughout the rules, we are changing in some areas to Oregon licensed tax consultant, Oregon licensed tax preparer. But in the definition, we never identify what that term is. And so we have licensed tax consultant and licensed tax preparer, which is defined and used in the Oregon administrative rules, and then this new term. That might be an opportunity to review further. Incompetence and negligence is not defined, even though you talk about it in eight hundred oh one oh zero zero one seven subset three. In zero zero one, pardon me, zero one zero 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 twenty five, we talk about additional personal services. Did you, did the board perhaps intend to call that additional professional services outside of tax preparation and consulting? That might be clearer. And just as a, in accountability, which is eight hundred one zero, excuse me. I, I do taxes and every once in a while I flip my numbers, which is why I employ someone to check all of my work. Zero one zero 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 three zero eight. USB drive or confidential portal only, not email. That seems, that not email seems inappropriate there. I, it is possible to send some documents with personal identifying information removed through email. Perhaps the board would consider expanding the definition of, not the definition, expanding its rules regarding confidentiality. Nowhere in our rules do we state that the business or nowhere in the rules that I've noticed do we state that the, both the business and the individual practitioner are responsible for ensuring that confidential information is not intentionally nor accidentally released to a third party without appropriate, unless it's permitted by Oregon administrative rule and without appropriate written disclosure document, I'm being inarticulate, from the client. And I would suggest that in that integrity and objectivity, under eight hundred ten zero zero two five four, that you add the language, you have additional personal services by the licensee, such as, and then add, but not limited to, so that it can be clearer that we're not stating, we're not limiting this rule to just that. And in eight hundred ten forty five, under experience and competence, it states a licensee must not prepare tax returns, blah, 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 without first seeking the assistance of a person who is competent in the area of concern. I think you probably want, I would encourage you guys to think about that some more. Your expectation isn't that they talk to a butcher about a tax problem that the butcher has no experience in and I have no experience in. Your expectation is that I will, as a licensee, pursue continuing education, peer review, and other resources to ensure that I have met the expectation of the code. And we, you could expand in this area a little bit more about what working within practice is.
Susan, yeah, thank you. We've hit your time. But you, I just wanted to let you know to wrap up anything else you wanted to say.
I just wanted to say thank you and sorry for being all over the place.
No, you're good. Thank you so much. Next, we have John. John, I can't hear you.
I was actually telling you I have nothing to add. I'm just listening today, but thank you. John Shuley in New York.
Thank you, John. Next, we have somebody on here that their name is coming up as Fireflies. Are they wanting to speak?
I think that's an AI note taker, Laura.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ashley Solderholm.
Sorry, I was trying to figure out the mic. No, I'm, I'm just, I'm mostly here to listen, but I, like other people, am in agreement that some of the issues that are coming up, you know, especially with people not recognizing that Oregon requires a separate license, I think that that can cause great issue across multiple states. And I mean, I don't know how, I mean, I, I find it interesting and I'm curious as to, I'm curious as to what Oregon is doing to notify other states of this issue because I feel like a lot of tax practitioners in other states are going to run into several issues if they don't know that this exists. So that's just my only comment.
Thank you, Ashley. We had Patty, but I don't see that she's on anymore. Patty, are you still here? I don't see her either. Next, I have Phoenix.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, my name is Krishna. I, I was just listening in as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe, let's see. I believe that I've gotten through the list that I can see. Is there anyone that I missed or that would like to speak? Hearing none will close out the public hearing for today. Thank you for coming and appearing online and providing us with your comments. And hearing no further comments, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Remember that you, we still have our come-up period open. If you'd like to submit those comments through May 5th, Monday, May 5th at 5:00 PM. Thank you all. Have a wonderful day and feel free to email me or call me if you have any questions or follow up. I think I can leave. I can just leave, can't I? Didn't I just leave? Or is mine open or something? Oh, we have to leave this.